Awesome. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Good to see you all. Um, let's see, calling this meeting to order at 5:33. We will start with a blank slate.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, trustee Chin.
Here.
Trustee Proctor. Trustee Brooks.
Here.
Trustee Trent.
Here.
And I'm here. Um, I need an approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second, thank you, trustee Chin for the motion, trustee Brooks for the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, public statement. So this is a study session, so we'll pause a couple of times for public statements, but we will start now with any public statements related to the agenda item. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Any in-person members have public comment?
Sure. Yes. Sorry, I haven't filled out my form though.
No worries. You can, you can come and do that after. You can speak from wherever you would like.
Wonderful. Okay. Um, so I just wanna first of all, share, uh, my name's Pierce, by the way, I'm a teacher about it. I first of all, just wanna share how excited I am by so many of the things that are going on. Uh, in particular, I have the honor of being involved with the, um, teacher lead program, which I'm extremely excited for. Um, I do also, uh, wanna temper that with just a little concern, which is that I hope that we're bringing a broad enough teacher experience into the consideration of, I love the line, um, "The best ways to support our students and teach the high and equitable performance." I'm a little concerned that maybe the, the, we could bring still more, uh, experiences of more teachers on a broader level as opposed to perhaps limiting that to TOSSAs or other experiences, which I worry may not be an accurate sample of the needs. Um, and so, uh, I just would be really excited to bring that with the many, many shifts that we're bringing, um, all in parallel. Um, I'm concerned that we're not able to adequately address some of the needs, whether it be through negotiations or if you're just recognizing challenges as they're coming up. So, um, yeah, I would love to see more ways to bring that. Um, but at the same time, I'm super invested in this work and, uh, super glad to see, uh, to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience, in-person audience comments? All right, can we check, uh, Zoom, please?
Yes. Uh, thank you, President Watkins. One second. Good evening. I'll be calling on speakers during public comment in random order. To our attendees, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Attendees that have called in can dial star nine to raise their hand. Speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks, and once time is expired, we will move to the next speaker. At this moment, uh, Randy Painter SCD has their hand raised. Please go ahead.
Board members, thank you for your service. I implore you to take a close look at the data and messaging you'll receive tonight. First, some of the messaging. I've seen mentioned in the slide deck in the letter sent home this week that this district and the strategic plan are not about test prep or quick fixes. That is great to hear, but when has anyone ever suggested that as our strategy? In more than 10 years as a parent paying attention in this district, I've never heard anyone suggest that. Please be careful about messaging like this red herring. The truth is that many members of this community, like you and me, care about sustainable strategies for success for all students. All means all. Last month's board meeting, I heard the dismay of some board members that the CASP results weren't as encouraging as hoped and that the prior year's interim assessments had inspired a lot of optimism. I believe our educators, the interim assessments are useful for how they're intended, but they're not intended to predict CASP scores or even to report publicly. In fact, as parents, we don't even get the scores from our own children. Based on interim assessments last year, one of you trustees was encouraged that 50 to 70% of this year's eighth graders could take algebra, but there's no way we can tell because the percent of students enrolled in algebra isn't even reported. Slide 11 is the place where it should be, but that's the only graph of all similar graphs where percent isn't reported. Starting with the graphs on slide 12, I suggest you really take in these data carefully. The way these data are presented can be misleading, even for folks accustomed to data analysis. A much more honest and comprehensive view of the data would be to report the stacked red, yellow, green, blue charts to see the complete distributions each year side by side. You saw these kinds of charts at the last board meeting. So taking you back to October's board meeting last year, several folks expressed concern about comparing interim assessment data with CASP data. In response, the superintendent and one trustee labeled the public commentators as having a deficit approach and failing to assume positive intent. The commentators, one of them a district teacher, had spoken up earnestly and in the spirit of rebuilding trust, only to be met with ugly political messaging tactics. I absolutely want to see this district succeed and be sustainable. I'm a true believer in public education and that I need to fully participate to help things improve. Part of participating fully means sending my own kids to public schools and not seeking outside academic enrichment for them to get ahead. Can you all say the same thing? My kids are fine. I keep showing up for the kids that aren't and because I want to encourage an intentional, traceable, and sustainable path to great outcomes for all students in our district. I don't care about how it makes any political career look. I do care about all of the students in our district succeeding. All means all. Please ask the questions to get us there, even if it's hard.
Thank you, President Watkins. There are no other public comments at this time.
Thank you. Um, moving over to presentation.
All right. Good evening. David Chabliss, Assistant Superintendent for Education Services. Uh, back after our October session to follow up with you and spend a nice amount of time to, uh, study more, uh, in depth on our, our CASP assessment data and also to look at some other assessment data. So I'm gonna, um, present some information to you now. Give me a second here to share my screen. And please, at whatever point that you, uh, you want to stop and, um, you know, spend some time in discussion, otherwise I'll, I'll push through and recognize that the idea is for me to lay out a fair amount of information for you and then you engage in discussion following that. So. All right. So, uh, just, you know, as a frame for today's, tonight's conversation, anytime we, we talk about equity-focused student achievement, there is tremendous amount of data that we could look at. So we've brought to you tonight some data that, um, is closely aligned with our, our strategic plan and the goals that we have laid out for ourselves. Um, and we've brought a variety of data. And we're gonna talk about, um, many of the strategies in our strategic plan because that strategic plan really takes this approach of broad, um, shifts and improvements in teaching and learning, not just, uh, a focus on, on quicker fixes. Um, the, the goal, as you all know, and if endorsed, is, is changing the conditions that, um, have created achievement gaps in our district, even while, as we saw last month, our, our CASP performance is high, um, and continues to be so. We still have, um, achievement gaps within that data that we urgently need to address. So, uh, as, as part of, you know, that work tonight, we're, we hope to talk about, you know, how we're finding and can still find the best ways to support our students and teach the high equitable performance. One of the things that, um, we've tried to do in preparing the data for tonight is to hearken back to the report actually that we shared at the last Equity Focus Student Achievement Session in September of 2022. You recall the L3 Report. So I'm actually gonna begin with the focus on, um, early literacy actions, which you may recall was root cause number one that that, uh, report investigated. And, um, it just kind of remind us of where we are in the actions of, uh, from our strategic plan around that. Last year was our year one of implementing a new foundational literacy curriculum. Uh, we also rolled out, uh, an extended learning, uh, program, Footsteps to Brilliance, which we focused on as, as learning at home. Uh, we had a cadre of language and literacy TOSSAs, which we had had before, but we very specifically targeted them on the kindergarten through uh, second grade classes to intensely, um, support, uh, the work we were doing in foundational literacy. Um, and in addition, we, um, we, we spent a lot of time engaging with families. You recall the work our community, service specialists were doing and tracking who was engaged with Footsteps to Brilliance and who was not, and making calls and affirming or prodding and reminding. It was a great deal of work we were doing to sort of really bring the literacy work as a whole day, whole partner kind of activity. All of that obviously is being continued for this year. Uh, the work particularly at the elementary level, PD work or professional development work, is, uh, now in the second year of the implementation of PATH, is to really sort of root it well within our broader curriculum, uh, literacy curriculum, which is our benchmark curriculum, and, um, focus on the ELD strategies that we need to address to accelerate the learning of our, um, English learners. And then also this year, uh, we've seen the expansion of our multilingual services team and are bringing, uh, an additional cadre of TOSSAs to specifically focus on, on, uh, that ELD work. So, uh, continuing what we did last year and intensifying work particularly, um, around our English learners.
And David, if I can, um, expand a little bit more on the multilingual focus. If you look at the indispensable work that our literacy TOSSAs did last year, we had them at every site. Some sites with two or three. And, you know, they worked hand in hand with classroom teachers. They are teachers. They're, they're experienced expert teachers. So they're not doing a lot of administrative work. They're not supervising, you know, duties that a principal would do or otherwise away from their collaboration with teachers. Um, but we just didn't have the infrastructure. We didn't have the people. We didn't have, and, and we came into last year with a lot of literacy TOSSAs that were doing the work previously. Um, and we had a great experience with our middle school math TOSSAs and some elementary math TOSSAs last year as well. So this is really about deep and close collaborative work with expert, trusted, experienced teachers, working hand in hand with all of our classroom teachers. And that's, that's the multi-year process of taking staff through growth and change and, um, and a, a, um, adoption of strategies that work for multilingual students. And that's, when we surveyed our staff question, it was one of the most requested services this year was more support for multilingual students. So we're excited about that. And that's at, right now, it's at those four schools, and I think we have additional support staff out of other schools.
So let's, let's spend a little time looking at the data that we have, um, and kind of reflecting on this. How did the strategic actions that we implemented last year impact early literacy readiness? So, um, we use a test for single word reading, uh, in our PATH curriculum, which is very much what it sounds like, just the ability to read, uh, increasingly complex words, um, across kindergarten through second grade. So what I'm sharing with you here is the data on, um, on first and second graders last year, the beginning of the year, they took the fall assessment. Now, these were students who had never had PATH before. So this was just as we're starting PATH. And then we're looking at first and second grade who took the test just the last couple of weeks. So we're looking at the question of our, our students who actually as first graders had PATH last year as kindergartners and as second graders had it as first graders. We would anticipate we're doing this intense work. Are we in fact now making them more ready for literacy work in their current grade for this year? So you'll see that, um, the, uh, first two rows or the, the bar charts on, on the left, we, we're looking at what's the percentage of students that scored not meeting on that PATH test for single word reading? So the yellow bar is what, uh, they did in 2022, again, without any PATH in their background. And what they did in, uh, this fall, 2023, with a year of PATH. Now, this is the not meeting category. So importantly, if we're doing well, we wanna see it go down. We wanna see fewer students not meeting, um, uh, standard on that PATH assessment. And you'll notice there, uh, for our first and second graders, that that is in fact what happened. Um, in our first graders, we had almost 10% um, fewer students scoring not meeting. In second grade, it was a little, a little over 4%. And then on the other side, we'd wanna see an increase in the number of students who are meeting and exceeding standard after a year of PATH. So again, comparing 22 to 23, you'll see that we have first grade, that there was an increase. Now here, you wanna see the increase. We have an increase of about 5%. And at second grade, we have a much smaller increase of about 1%. So that's one way to look at how we compared last year to this year.
Can I make an observation too?
Please.
Look at last fall, the percentage of first grade students not meeting standard is 34 and a half percent. Those students are now in second grade. The percentage of second graders not meeting standard is 14.75%. To me, that, that's the through line of how students perform in year one and how students perform in year two, because the kids in year, when you, when you judge it across, you're talking about different students. And that's important too, because we want that, you know, after a couple of years, you want that to also, you know, kind of be the same. Um, but I really look at those first graders from 22 and say, how are they doing this year in 23? Because next year, in 24, I wanna see that not meeting go remain from that 14.7. To me, that's like our new, that's our new number to go, all right, let's continue, um, to see that number change.
How about like in the past where we haven't had this program? Where would we typically see a first grader who was not meeting? Where would they generally end up in second grade? Would they still, would you see like a 34% stay at 34%? Would you see an increase?
Different tests. Um, we had, we had exams that were different. Pam, you're here. You, you wanna pull the chair for a second? Because Pam was a principal at the time, but also in the curriculum department and, um, you know, statistically, it was very common for that, that kinder assessment that determined that certain kids were behind in grade level, they remained. And the, and the group got larger over time. That was sort of, kind of our analysis of why we went this route was we were setting a pattern in kinder and it was remaining. And so they went to middle school. So you, like, oh, and you know, you, you can speak to it as a principal, but also as a.
Um, you know, from the FMP to the DRA, which was before the FMP, a similar assessment. We didn't see students not only holding the skills, either they remain the same or there, what we call the summer slide, or they came back below. But this is the first time we're seeing more positive effect where they, with the, you know, it is a different assessment, but that they left summer and came back with more. So it's very exciting.
And we're actually, we're gonna look at some of that data in a little more detail. Here is, uh, a similar analysis. Now, this is just the percent of students not meeting on this slide because we're looking at all of, of different key student groups. Uh, now, because it's not meeting, again, what we're hoping to see is a decline. We wanna see the yellow bar. Uh, I mean, from yellow to blue, we wanna see a decline. And you'll notice, um, from the, the table that, for example, our, um, English learners, we saw a decline from 51.29% of students in last fall, again, without PATH behind them, uh, not meeting standard, and that that dropped down to 42.79. And again, I, I wanna emphasize, this is in the first year of implementation. So we did a great job and it's still the first year of implementation. Teachers are gonna get better and stronger, um, as years go forward. The students with disabilities changes is particularly notable. It's almost 20%. Um, so again, that, that explicit instruction in, that they're getting through, uh, the PATH curriculum and with the support of, of the teachers and TOSSAs is making a dramatic difference in the percent of students who are coming this fall. We would say if you're in not meeting, that you're not fully ready for this year's learning. So that's partly why we're trying to move as many students out of this as possible. And then if you go to the next slide, um, on the other end, we're looking to push more and more students into meeting or exceeding. And you see similar kinds of data. Now, this is where you wanna see an increase in the percentage. And you'll note, for example, that our students with disabilities, it's, you know, 20, uh, almost 20.5% improvement. Our, our English learners here, uh, was flat or even a slight decline. So obviously, we're, we're taking a close look at that. This is part of the reason we're emphasizing the multilingual work. I would also remind us that, um, we reclassified a tremendous number of English learners, um, between the two assessments. And so that, um, higher performing group of students who are identified as EL in the fall of 2022 are not in the testing group in the fall of 2023. So that's a kind of a mitigating factor there.
Do we see the same, the trend that you noted, uh, Superintendent Ochoa, about, you know, first graders to the, the, yeah, matching? Like, do we see similar trends across our subgroups where we're, because as you noted, right, we're comparing different groups of kids, which is an important data point, but the point that you mentioned is another.
We do see it. Yeah. And it, it changes because now, you know, you might take a group that has 185, but when you start looking at just grade level cohorts, it's like 22. So it kinda can get a little bit fuzzy there because if the group's too small, you can see, it'll be like a 44% growth, but really it's, it's like a really small N. We see it happening across the board. And then we pull it apart and we find examples like in this case, our multilingual learner students who had a slight decline. So that's, you know, for us, we go to the drawing board and say, let's think about it. What happened? And then try some different, um, you know, collaborative work to try to get that, uh, a little bit more of an understanding about why it may have happened.
Quick question. Um, have we looked at the data school by school at all? Um, like, do we see, is it like roughly, are we seeing roughly the same changes? Or are there like huge variances across, um, different schools?
Yeah, um, we have been looking at it by school. I had, uh, Kyle, and as our coordinator of assessment, I laughed together because she color codes it. And if the column is all green, it means all of the schools had the, in, in the case of the meeting exceeding, the positive growth at the other end, the negative growth that we wanna see. And we're seeing, we're seeing green all over the place. So, um, all of our schools are making progress and we're particularly leaning in and noticing where our schools are making tremendous progress and where it's more modest.
And the, the great thing about our, our system of data is we, we get this all in the system. We gave exams two weeks ago. That we're, we're already presenting publicly the data, like, across, that's very unusual. I wanna encourage everybody to go online, go to other school districts in this whole region, in the whole state. They're not presenting this. They're not discussing this. This is our ability to get this data in, organize it, and then ultimately have a conversation publicly about it. I think it speaks to the sophistication of the way we're able to, to pull this together. And then you start to get really close to the school site and you go, oh, that, that was a school where the kinder teacher was out for the whole year for XYZ reason or, and then you start to realize like that had an effect. You know, when there's two teachers in a grade level and one of them is out for the most of the year, you're gonna see an impact on scores.
We finished the PATH assessment last Friday. So to have this here is huge. And we were able to, we identified kind of the two places where we saw some of where it was in green and we were able to talk about, you know, like something was going on with either the classroom or the TOSA. And so we're already like making plans to go in and work with those school sites.
Yeah, just to nod there to, obviously, the, the classroom teachers, the TOSSAs who are right on this work. And then, um, last year, um, you all approved the purchase of Luminate, which is a data system that allows us to enter this data and analyze it very quickly. And then, um, Kyla and her team, right on the spot, having, uh, the information ready.
Well, we're talking about, um, I'm just curious. I mean, you're, you're talking a little bit about it, um, already, what individual school sites are doing, but I'm just curious to hear a little more about, you know, like it's, it's obviously, it's great for us to have this conversation and like where the change happens is at the classroom level. So just curious, kinda like what that looks like. It sounds like principals and TOSSAs and educators are looking at this. And just curious if you could talk a little more about that.
Yeah, actually, can I bring Pam back on? I mean, so the. And the data is, the data is just fresh, right? So it's just coming out. But, you know, do you wanna talk a little bit about what's coming and the way?
So tomorrow, uh, the, the Ellen Elto says we meet every other week, uh, in person, then, um, ever, then we do some virtual meetings, but tomorrow we're reviewing the data together. Um, and then September 26th is a, uh, what we kind of hold as a staff meeting across the district. Uh, there are some conferences, so that we have to adjust that date, but overall, what we're doing tomorrow with the TOSA team is gonna be done at the upcoming staff meeting. Um, and actually, we have weekly communication to principals where this data is shared as well. And then the next piece would be kind of the couple of sites where we saw some, uh, we, we didn't see the same, uh, increase or decrease where we wanted. I'm actually have scheduled to be out at those sites over the next couple of weeks.
And at those, at those faculty meetings, the scene is classroom teachers, probably by grade level with their data, having a bigger conversation, but you know, a way for them to look at it, think about it, give feedback, right, at this, but really very focused at that site level.
The TOSA leads those conversations alongside the principal with the grade level teams. We have a protocol that we look at data with. And then from there, they're making, setting some goals for the students. And then right after that, we have our first district PD day, which will continue this work. So myself, um, and, uh, our director of multilingual services, Alita, her team, Jeanette Ramirez, our principal, special assignment. For multilingual learners, we're doing that planning with our TOSA teams, bringing that back to teachers, getting feedback and then bringing that to them. So it's all like between doing this assessment and October 9th, which seems, can seem calendar far, but not in school, is actually really fast where we're gonna be picking focal students, making, um, developing goals for the students using the, um, strategies that we are sharing across the district to support multilingual learners using this data.
That's awesome. Super exciting to hear. Um, just like the nimble response to, I mean, right, because the point of collecting the data is to be able then to use it to inform instruction, right? Like not to give us an update, I mean, which is helpful, but you know, that's the actual intention. I know that I've shared this before, but, um, I'm just wondering, like, if we think we can, if, do we think that our, like, educators and staff have enough time to, like, engage in the kind of analysis and discussion and planning that we think they should have? Because I just wonder if they're, and maybe we're already doing this, but like if their creative opportunities just provide more time, right? Like, how do we release grade levels every other week to have like an hour and a half where they're like digging in and talking with their focal students, right? And there are like creative ways. So maybe it's something to continue talking about, but it's another plug for us thinking that and, or us trying various like Superintendent Ochoa going like, leaving all of first grade at, you know, San Mateo Park or whatever.
Sign you up.
You know, and I mean, I would do it too, right? Like, I think, yeah.
Barn star.
I'm, I'm, I'm totally down, but no, I just.
But you also hit, uh, you know, President Watkins on what, you know, at the very classroom level, you know, it's that, that sort of time to, the analysis being connected to the collaboration, being, uh, being connected to the iteration of how to try to something to address a, a concern area and, and then having time to come back and talk through it.
Well, our teachers know. They have a lot of strategies. And it's just like you're saying that time to think, okay, these students didn't do, what did you do in your classroom? Here's what I did. My students are here, or I have a similar situation. So yes, time and those creative opportunities. And then having the TOSA to coach and support or say, hey, I can come in and model that for you. That's, that's where we're going.
And let's, let's take a minute and look at the kind of data that a teacher might, um, have in front of them. So. So I'm skipping a couple of slides just because it's connected to the conversation that we're having. So here's just a, you know, a snip of, you know, a spreadsheet of a classroom. And I would have access to, well, how many words did, did this set of students read this fall? And how many did they read last spring? So this kind of speaks to some of what Pam was mentioning about summer loss. And what would I say about those first four students where we see, you know, a pretty substantial decline from the spring to the fall in their their ability to read words? And what kind of questions would I begin to ask as a teacher or as a principal or as a superintendent about what's going on with those students? We, you know, we might have questions about, well, how are they accessing our footsteps to brilliance over the summer? Let's go look at the data on their usage over the summer. We might ask, did they participate in any of the extra supports we had available this summer? Looking forward to the conversation we were just having, you know, what's, what's the teacher conversation about identifying focal students and saying, okay, in this classroom, my four focal students are those first four students. And I'm going to think about the fact that three of them and the fourth is, you know, initially fully English proficient, you know, what ELD strategies might I bring to bear in my classroom? Because what we have there is a group of students who had a level of skill, but then it wasn't like consolidated. Over the summer, if the lack of usage, the the learning went away. And so how do I, how do I strengthen and support that? And then, of course, on the other end, lots of questions about the students who made massive growth. What were they doing? And we would ask ourselves, you know, how were they perhaps connected to some of the supports that that we've provided? That would be questions that we would want to ask ourselves. So this is, you know, this is the kind of thing that we would hope and support our teachers and our TOSAs to to engage in.
I have a question regarding the summer academic strategies that we offer to our students. Do we, have we moved to a place yet where we are offering footsteps, footsteps to brilliance to all of our students during summertime? Because I think that can vary if we're only offering it to a certain group of students versus allowing all of them to have access.
Yeah, everyone has access and
Community access.
Community access.
We actually have hundreds of users in the community who don't have kids in our schools. But we partner with all of our local preschools and they actually register and they use the program for their, you know, especially the auditory component of like hearing songs in English, being able to read a book to your child in English. But every child, once they enter, they get their code, their account, and they have access to be able to use it.
The steps are really just like a virtual summer school and that was, that was shared out with all of our families.
We, in in our summer camp, at our summer school, a lot of emphasis on footsteps brilliance. It was used in those programs, but it wasn't only, you know, it was off, all students have been taught how to access it. So and this, you know, maybe remind of last meeting where Diego described the, this room turned into a living room where he had identified students who had not been using footsteps to brilliance and tried to overcome that barrier of, well, what's the, what's getting in the way? Let's bring the parent and the student in and teach them how to use it. And then see, as you saw, this tremendous increase in that, in that usage.
And it's, it's a matter of scaling, David. So if we had unlimited funds, I would buy every single student two hundred books and send them home with two hundred physical books that speak to them, that they love, that. But we have, you know, ten, eleven thousand students, that's not scalable. And this is a way for us to be able to offer programming to all of our students and to be able to track it. And because we've created a system of of staff who work here at the district, who connect with these families, these are community service specialists, they're trusted, they speak their language, they connect with families. I mean, we're talking daily, weekly type of contact. There's a lot of trust. So when they call them and say, hey, come in, we're looking at your child's usage in the program, we need to know what's going on. And the families are really responsive to that. And and ultimately, we want to give them tools that they can use in their home. And in this one case, for early literacy, it happens to be this one program. But it's really about the bigger ecosystem of who can we get together with these families? How can we get, you know, right, connect, right with them and then give them resources to use at home?
Another set of questions that we're doing with the PATH data, but let me just back up for a second. You know, we, we have the obligation of looking at efforts we implemented last year. You recall that we ran a literacy boost using a BookNook, which is a virtual tutoring program last spring. So and, you know, we're asking ourselves, well, let's see, you know, we, we saw on the assessment day that was administered administered by BookNook, we saw some very positive results. But did it actually translate into results on, you know, our state assessment? And you can see that, I mean, you know, there's a lot of mediating factors, a lot of things besides BookNook that impacts the students' CASP scores. But, you know, I obviously by far the majority of students from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three stayed at the same level. We would have rather seen that group move up a level. So those are the kinds of questions we're asking ourselves about the interventions that we're putting into place, not just about BookNook, of course, but about the the variety of camps and things like that. So, yeah, so I just wanted to share that as sort of an example of what particularly we're doing at the, at the district office. So let's talk for a minute also about some other actions that are taking as part of our strategic plan. So I'm moving here to a middle school math work, which as a board, we had the foresight to approve over two years ago. And we wanted to come back with some data for you. So we wanted to share with you the algebra enrollment data for this twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Now, of course, this is an achievement data, right? We have to see how students actually learn algebra, but they can't learn it if they don't have access. And so this is the access question. And you'll note that from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-four, that we saw about two-thirds increase in the number of students enrolled. So kind of the yellow bar to the blue is approximately a hundred and thirty more students are accessing algebra than before. Kind of to the, to a question that was raised earlier on, we have roughly nine hundred, nine hundred fifty students in seventh grade, just to, just to pull a quick percentage. So basic, I mean, excuse me, in eighth grade. So to pull a quick percentage, we have basically thirty-three, thirty-four percent of our students now enrolled in algebra. When you look at the different groups of enrollment, it's, it's remarkable. We, we said going into this that one of the things we wanted to see change was those student groups that are out, traditionally outside the sphere of success, what's their access to algebra? Well, it was for Hispanic Latinx students, it was four percent in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. And in this school year, it's twelve point two percent. We want to see that go substantially higher, but it's worth noting that the participation or enrollment in algebra has tripled in two years for Hispanic and Latinx students. So let's talk a little bit about achievement, though, related to this work. So here, we're, we're just diving in. You'll recall that the work really got traction last year, particularly with our cohort of sixth grade students. So this year, we're, we're digging in and looking at the impacts across grades. And so here, we just wanted to pull some groups for you to pay attention to. So this was the seventh grade performance of students with disabilities. And you can see the increase in the percentage of students who've met or exceeded, as well as in the other levels between. Now, here, the yellow bar is two thousand nineteen. So what we did was we went back and we're going pre-pandemic. So all the questions about learning loss, all the questions, you know, of the, we're inviting that comparison to how were students performing before the pandemic to now? And not only have we eliminated learning loss, we actually are seeing acceleration for that group. And then if you look at for English learners, similar acceleration. We look at some specific ethnic racial groups in our district, again, two that are historically outside the sphere of success. So it's notable that the only group that we have not gotten the same kind of traction with is our Hispanic Latinx group. So that's obviously something we've observed and noted and are thinking about the work that will accelerate that. And here, just two other groups that historically are inside the sphere of success. And you see, kind of consistent with the CASP scores in general, there's stability. We, we've made up the learning loss questions and are basically performing similar to two thousand nineteen. Now, again, we want to be way beyond this, but it gives some perspective.
And and David, what's currently out there publicly is preliminary CASP data. And until the state finalizes and produces their first, you know, first look of this CASP data, we can't really tell you how other school districts did. And it's important to think about how the county does and how larger districts or comparable districts do, because it gives you some idea of where we sit in in that bigger conversation. And we discussed this to some extent last year. But districts regionally and definitely throughout the state experienced ten and twelve and fifteen percent decreases in student achievement last year as compared to before the pandemic. This year, I work in a lot of circles with administrator organizations. There are a lot of school districts that experienced another big decline. So it's, it's noteworthy and it's important when that data becomes more available, more accessible. Think about that, because this all points to some very powerful systemic work. You're, you're looking at test score results for seventh grade students. If you, if you think about the group sizes of some of these groups, we're talking about a lot of kids. We're not talking about ten kids, just the students with disabilities in seventh grade. It's a hundred and ten kids. That's a lot of kids. Seeing that growth happen as compared to before the pandemic, think about the impact that the pandemic had on children with special needs. This graph looks reversed in many, many other school districts. So I'm, I'm really proud of that. I think our teachers are the absolute best teachers. I think our principals are amazing and certainly the the structure that we put in place with our TOSA supports and our leadership supports, I think, speak to to these changes.
So in addition to the focus on middle school math, obviously, you know, there are several other strands or equity work in special education, in multilingual services, which actually we've mentioned, and more broadly in middle school, we think about the engaging instruction around the block schedule and the social emotional supports we're emphasizing. So this just is kind of a summary of some of the, that work. And and again, the question is with, with what impact? So again, we've selected some data for you to spend time with. Now here, you're looking at, again, this is the CASP data. This is not just seventh grade, this is overall. So you're looking at the ELA growth between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-three overall. So third through eighth grade for both ELA and mathematics. So again, we're seeing this pattern of acceleration beyond, you know, any questions of learning loss.
Question about these charts. So we don't include the not met category, is that right? Or is this?
No, you're right. What you're saying, yeah, I should have explained that. Apologies. So the, the left bars is that combined met and exceeded. And then, then you'll see then there's the exceeded for nineteen versus twenty-three, then met, and then nearly, right? So we just, again, we're just emphasizing because the idea is how are we approaching students with RICAR? A meeting standard.
Yeah, I mean, I would just be curious to see like for the ones, for the not met, like, have those gone down? Like, we would want to see those go down. So I think it would be a more complete picture if we see all of it.
Some of this, I should say, you know, we've made some, because last meeting, we did share with you, so we didn't bring it forward. We're kind of breaking it down in a little more detail, and I appreciate that.
But also very cognizant of how it looks. So if we did that, it would actually kind of squeeze in the size of the graph. But and the reason we put met and exceeded together is because when the state produces that website, that the public goes on, that's what the state, like, there's those two circles. And the number in the middle is the combination of met exceeded. So we, like, we debated this, like, well, we'd leave that out and we could put in the not met, but then they won't see the other number and then the data will come out and it'll be like, that number isn't what they presented, so.
You, you saw choices.
You put your finger on the x-ray at the part, we see it and.
So this is again, students with disabilities. Now, again, because of the work that's happening in the middle schools, we just thought it would be interesting to look overall. You've already seen the seventh grade math. I just brought that for it as a way of comparison. But you should note the seventh grade ELA. Again, this is just a dipstick. We're not, you know, attempting to be completely comprehensive here because frankly, comprehensive is so much data we would be here till tomorrow. And then changing groups here, now we're looking again, grades three through eight overall for English learners. And again, you're seeing that, that kind of flat, you know, performance, in some cases, some, some slight declines. So again, sort of justifying the, the need to, you know, move on the strategies we have for multilingual learners, expand services, that kind of thing. And we've described some of those, those actions to you. And again, just kind of keeping with this idea of looking at middle school. Here you see the through line around ELA. And again, I brought math forward. You know, the other thing which, you know, you know, somewhat, it's part of the plan, but it's a little bit separate in that we are now at the point we actually need to bring a new ELA curriculum forward. So our director, Kenyatta Cook, is leading a team of people who, at this moment, are piloting some new curriculum in English Language Arts, because some of this is, you know, you've got to have a strong standard client, a curriculum, and, and one that is consistently taught through all, all classrooms. And so, you know, some of what you're seeing in the ELA performance is the need to get that in place. And so that's something we're working on actively right now. And then here, again, we're just looking at, this is third through eighth grade again, and we're focusing on a handful of ethnic racial groups. You can see some of the overall data where, again, you know, this is some of the work we need to do. So kind of calling out those gaps that we're saying we need to address. And you can see that when you consider these two groups, which basically are back to pre-pandemic performance. And then here, just to sort of look again at that thread of middle school students. Here's for seventh grade African-American students, particularly for African-American students. Those numbers start to get a little small, so it's a little tricky. You know, you'll see some, some wobbles in how the data, what the data tells you. But again, the need, and, yeah, it's sort of the through line of stable performance here with the other two groups. And then finally, just because I spent time with you looking at the seventh grade math data specifically, I also, I just wanted to take a minute and show you the math data of three through eight, the math data three through eight, which again, this includes the work that Amy Burke, as our coordinator, is leading with a group of TOSAs in the elementary schools. There's important shifts here that we need to make compared to groups who are traditionally inside this here. Turn the balance of the tide over to you.
Thank you so much, David.
Would you like me to bring the deck down?
Yeah, I think so. We can do maybe we'll, do we have clarifying questions from the board that weren't asked kind of during the presentation? Otherwise, you can maybe open up, if so, we can ask those and then we'll maybe open up for public comment again and then discuss. The questions?
I had one clarifying question, just, and I think this is what you're saying, but on the one slide where you talked about the the literacy, the book no, and you were, were you trying to, and I apologize, you were saying that like, didn't work so well? And so, okay.
Yeah, I mean, what we, you know, I mean, it's it's important to recognize that that students make like when they when they're at the same level, they made a year's growth. Okay, that's important. Because they they became lower performing because they weren't making a year's growth in earlier grades, right? So but when we we have an intervention and a student is scoring at a one and not beating level, and they're still at a one, now, one of the things we need to like, we could go in and look at this, the scaled score, and there's some things we can do with that. But but we would hope interventions would begin to see students performing at higher levels, so.
Well, and I think the, you know, the bigger umbrella is the strategy we use is to always analyze what we do. If we do something, we analyze it because none of us in in the work are are fixated on doing one thing for the sake of doing it. It's about having a system that allows you to put programs in place to facilitate what we believe to be growth. And then we go and check to see how we did. And when we're not pleased with the result, we modify and we come back and look at it again a year later.
We have another approximately 75 students who are doing Book Nook this fall. So it's a much smaller group than we originally had last spring. That's going to afford, and we also made some shifts, like one of the challenges with Book Nook was students who were accessing it at home and the attendance of that group versus those who were accessing it as part of an after-school program. So we brought it entirely into an after-school program. So that's a group that, you know, we're interested in seeing. I have lots of questions myself about virtual tutoring and what impact it can really have. But we've got an ability to kind of take another look at how this program works and a slightly more controlled.
That was the question was whether we are continuing and it sounds like we're tweaking it and.
And actually, 75 licenses are from last year. So when we engaged in the process with Book Nook, we wanted to reach a number. We didn't get those extra 75 licenses implemented and we worked with the company and they said, use them this year. So we said, all right, we feel like our our thesis is that it works better when one of our employees is in the room facilitating and supporting and monitoring. Well, we're going to put that to the test. And then we say, all right, where are we going to do it? Okay, sunny Brady tomorrow, right? So we always take that approach and that analysis and go, where will it really make a strong impact? If it indeed is going to have that impact, let's bring it to sunny Brady low.
Okay, so these like, these now, I mean, I'm just saying like, some of the interventions that we've done have been district-wide. And this seems to be just like a very small, you know, so it's.
It was a test case.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But again, it's to Diego's point, the idea is when we try something, then we've got to interrogate the results and ask ourselves and modify. Yeah.
Continuing on that, so just clarifying, at the beginning, Superintendent Choa, you had mentioned that there were some schools that we were doing certain implementations, and I just wanted to clarify, in the early literacy actions, year one, did we have path and footsteps runs at every single school? And so we're doing, okay, so what you were talking about was actually the TOSAs at the different schools then, I think.
Yeah, and some schools might have more TOSA support than others, just based on on how we arrived at our analysis of how many kids were behind a grade level.
Any in-person audience members have additional public comment? Can we check and like to see if there's more public comment, please?
Yes, President Watkins, thank you. At the moment, there is one public comment, Randy Painter SCD. Okay, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the presentation of the data. I appreciate trustee Trin for asking the question about the data presentation on slides 12 and onwards. I suggest that you be really careful slash skeptical about the claims of, we have chosen these data or this data, I guess he's saying. But the proper way would be these data about these, this is cherry picking of the data. And the the more complete picture of the data, for example, what trustee Trin was asking for is is going to be better, and this is what you should ask for. For example, you know, I wish we could go back and look at the the data from the last board meeting, but those don't exist on the website right now. But from my recollection, there was, if you pulled all of the the black identified students, I believe from middle school together, there was a pretty big reduction in the casp casp scores from 2023 from 2022. And that's something that, you know, let's see what those students need. And let's get these students, let's get our students what they need. And instead of just cherry picking, you know, one grade level and showing you that. Another equity group that I really wish that we could take a look at would be our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders. Why? Why don't we have those broken out? Really, why don't we ever do that? We have a lot of that population in our district. Why don't we do that? And then finally. Sorry, I forgot my last point. I don't write it down. Thank you.
An HPI is that one?
Okay, President Watkins, there are no other public comments at this time.
Sounds good. All right, we can open it up for for discussion.
I'd be curious, you know, we have this data where we follow, you know, cohort basically from first grade not meeting. You know, literally grade level standards. And then now they're in second grade and we're seeing a pretty big drop. And then also, you know, a decent increase in the meeting and exceeding. And so I'm curious if it would be possible to, you know, kind of look at the scene, if we can see more data in the future about like following cohorts over time. Because that way, you know, we're looking at the same students, they've gone, they've kind of gone through the the program together. And we can see over time, like our like whether we continue to see, you know, big improvements as they get older. And and that way, we can also compare, you know, for example, when we have these preschoolers who that are going to be coming in to TK and kindergarten. Potentially, we'll be able to see like how that data compares to like previous years, things like that. I know those are, that's comparing across cohorts, but I would love to see data following a group of students so we can almost like see a narrative of of what their schooling is looking like. That makes sense.
Where we what we presented to the board and to the community a year ago, we spoke to that exactly, where we went back multiple years to find where our second and third grade students went to preschool and what programs they were enrolled in. And in that L3 report, we show a dramatic positive impact on the children having access to preschool. And equally dramatic negative impact when children are denied access to preschool. This board adopted a strategic plan that specifically calls out pre-K through K3. That is very unique. That's not common throughout the state of California. And has put the dollars behind building classrooms at Lead, Laurel Park, and Sunnyberg. And those classrooms are going to have a generational impact on giving kids access to coming to TK and K. Academically, yes, socially, emotionally. And you're reuniting all these families in their community. If you were in Lead a year ago, there were 24 spots in preschool. We have 70 kids in kindergarten at that school. Preschool is a two-year program. That means you have 140 kids who theoretically could benefit from preschool. They have 24 spots and and only half the kids were from the lead neighborhood. In the lead neighborhood, 70% of the families earn less than $70,000 for a family of four. They're not paying $1,600. Somebody told me what they job, $2,400, you know? It's obscene. Now that school, they currently today, they have 75 kids in preschool there. That means little brother, big brother, big sister, they're all together. And that's, you know, that's a generational. And so like, if you ask me, can we do it? Yeah, but let's do it with the current three-year-olds and let's see where they're at when they're eight years old.
It's exciting. We will know as soon as they hit kindergarten. What's the difference in their readiness, literacy readiness will have that day?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be awesome to see, you know, this time next year. But since, you know, once we have like people, the kids that have gone through at least a year, it'll be awesome.
Can I know, go ahead. Okay, I'll start. I'll go next. One, I want to thank you guys for the presentation and Pam, I know that, yeah. Thank everybody in your team and Superintendent Choa's team, everyone's team. Because I'm understanding that if this data just came in last Friday, to put it out. It's amazing. It's awesome, so.
So you know, the principals were on me on the weekend to see it.
They all, well, that's great. I, so I'm really happy to see it. I have, and I'm just going to go through the PowerPoint because otherwise I don't know how I'm going to get through this. One, I'm glad that Superintendent Choa made the the comment about the difference between when we're looking at path interim interim assessment data, the difference between the fall 2022 and the fall of 2023. And to think that we're, the actual graph shows sort of a 10% and 4% decline in say not meeting, but really you got to look at the actual students. You know, I go back to way back, there was the core data, I think it was, or something where we were actually looking at the actual individual groups of students and how they grow over time, rather than just looking at, you know, different students in different grades, but yet in comparing them when they're actually different. And so when I look at this data, I I feel like like you could almost say, I mean, we're interpreting it the way that the state looks at in terms of saying, hey, it's one grade versus the other grade just by year. But when you look at it, you know, what Superintendent Choa mentioned is like, it's 34%, you know, of that first grade not meeting, and then only 14% in the second grade. Those are the same students. That's a 20% decrease in the students that are not meeting that data. And I thought that that was great. On the flip side, you look at it in terms of meeting or exceeding, it's 48% to 60%, 61%. So you're looking at a 13% roughly increase, which means then there's probably what's not on the chart is like a 7%, like nearly meeting. Yeah, and I feel like if you if you're really going to look at it, I I love looking at sort of what apples to apples versus apples and oranges. Because, you know, but that's the way the state looks at, right? They look at it just in these grades. But to me, I love looking at how are we actually educating the same kids from grade to grade? So I love seeing that. It's kind of hidden there. So people may not notice that, but I I do feel like that that was really great. And to think that, you know, to see what happens next year, you know, I think it's going to be awesome. I'm just sorry, I'm just flying through here. The question on sort of the math enrollment. Does this, this includes every everyone, all the eighth graders currently enrolled in algebra right now, is that right?
Yes, so that's the students who are enrolled in what we would call the single period of algebra. And then the students who are currently enrolled in the double Math A, which then at the semester becomes the double algebra. So in that respect, they're not formally in algebra at this moment, but they will be as of the semester.
Great, thank you. And I love the comment about access. Because I think that's that's really key. Skipping through, I I understand the the comparison to pre-COVID or, you know, 2019 to 2023. I think that's a great sort of analysis. I almost like, I partially kind of want to compare, like this on the same note, apples to apples. Like the 2019 cohort, they're all not even in our district anymore because you think from third grade to eighth grade, that's five years, right? And you think 2023, so I almost love to kind of see the 22 and 21, even though it was in the pandemic. I feel like the charts are great because it's comparing, you know, what we have done. I kind of just feel like I want more, you know, just to fully analyze. Because sitting here and listening to the to the presentation, my mind is sort of racing and analyzing and looking. And I I kind of feel like I always want more data. But I'm happy to have this and I'm happy to see that there is some progress. While there definitely is some areas that we need to figure out what what's going on and how do we improve? So I mean, overall, I think, you know, and I've said this before, I mean, having this data is great. I love having more data. And and I know that, you know, Superintendent Choa, you've always mentioned that we're going to present the data that we have, whether it's good or bad. And I think, you know, this, there's room for optimism here and there's also room for the where we need to improve. And so I'm really, I'm really excited about actually seeing the data in comparison to your past and and kind of where we're going. So, thank you.
If I can chime in here. We'll spend some time going to find that group of kids that was in sixth grade in 21, 22, and was in seventh grade in 22, 23, specifically on this math issue. Because again, this is the year that we went to heterogeneous math. So this is sort of the design of at the board level, the policy change, the process change. Because those kids are here and they were with us taking exams in 2019. And I want to show you what it looks like. And it's very, very positive.
I remember you showed us a chart before. It was, and it was, there was really significant following the sixth to seventh when we did that.
And we have the evidence in the in the practice, in the in the, like, the day-to-day with our teachers, with seventh grade students last year, with the TOSA support, with the, you know, we have a process, we, they talked the, you know, we have a process, we, they talked about this at, at one of the sessions last year. These math mindset routines that our math teachers are doing, this very rigorous discussion-based, uh, collaboration-based math instruction. And you all have been with me into those classrooms. It does not look like the kind of math classrooms we went to. And it's borne out. What we want, you know, where we're headed now, the, the district hired seven more, eight more, six, some, seven, seven more elementary math TOSSAs this year. So this is the first time that we have what we believe to be the correct number of elementary math TOSSAs who are now in those fourth and fifth grade elementary math teachers' classrooms. Um, to be able to connect with teachers, planned lessons, organized assessments, and we expect to see an equally positive result as, as that program rolls out. And, you know, we have the budgeting in place to continue on for years to come to see this strategic plan.
I, oh, sorry. I, I just want to say thank you, David, for presenting this data and also stepping up. Appreciate it. Um, I appreciate it. Um, I think that this is very helpful. First of all, uh, I was gonna say, I called it this data and Superintendent Choa, you can call it this data also. That's fine with me. I called it this data as well. And also, you're allowed to say it however you want. And I was also going to say you all can send your children to whatever school you want as well. And still support and believe in public education. I was going to say also that, um, I kind of see the test testing also like kind of like a, a report card where I know that you somehow that you know that, you know, we don't do test prep, but it is something that we are, we do, are, we're accountable to. Everybody does it. Every school does it. Um, we're like judged by it. Every school, every district is judged by it. So it's something we do. And we do need to kind of answer to it. We, you know, those results come out. And so, um, we talked at our last board meeting about it and I, I did talk about, you know, I had some sort of expectations just because we had been seeing some assessments come out throughout the year. And I was hoping, you know, we were going to see some like grand results. And I think the results were just kind of similar to what we saw last year with no huge um, increase that we saw because we saw, I think we just saw like the, um, district-wide results, right? I don't think we, I don't think we dug deeper or anything correctly. But anyways, um, but that's one set of assessments. And, you know, here we're seeing other, other data. We're digging deeper. And so I think it's really important to just continue to look at data in all different ways. And so this is one way to look at it and I appreciate it. And I, and I, I really do like looking at, um, all of the different data sets here and you know, I want to continue to see it. So thank you for, for presenting this. I do agree with trustee Tran that we should be seeing, you know, the whole picture here. So, um, if we could continue this, that would be great. Um, but like I said, I, I do think of it kind of like a report card. So we do need to kind of like hold ourselves accountable. So I, when I asked that question about the book, I want to see, I want to like talk about and, and understand what did we try? Where, where did we, what worked, what didn't work and what are we going to change? So I, I appreciate hearing that. And I appreciate it's like kind of seeing what did we do last year? What are we doing this year? What is the strategy? So thank you for that. Kind of want to, I wanted to kind of keep our thoughts and like keep what, looking at the map, um, especially this year's eighth graders. I'm very curious about this group, especially the one that's doing, um, the two periods of math this year. I'm very curious how they're doing. Um, and just wondering, the group that's doing, um, like right now they're in eighth grade math for half the year and they're going to do algebra for half the year. Just curious how that's going to go. Cause this is the first year that's going to do that, that, uh, we'd love to hear more about them, especially as the year progresses. So as much data as you can give us throughout the year, I'd love to hear. I think that's all from me for now. I will start off, by the way, just so you know, my, the comments and everything. So I'm not all like, my thoughts are not all together, but thank you for the presentation and I appreciate it.
I'll echo just thanks. I think, um, you know, we ha- like having these conversations are, is not something, you know, I've been on the board for six years now, I think, um, which is like insane. Um, but I mean, I, it's, it's crazy to me because both at every level of the system, right? Like as a board, like, I don't know, I look at you too, because you've been on the board as long, you know, but it like Ken and Allison, you, I mean, like, these were not conversations that we were having, right? Or questions that we were asking five years ago. Um, and you know, when I think about just, you know, same with like, you know, David, you weren't preparing like data presentations like every other month. And these were, this just like wasn't the way that we were structuring our conversations and meetings and was something that we wanted to do for a long time. And so just the fact that it's something we're, that we're doing that both is happening at the board level, but then to hear Pam, you reflect on like this came out and now we're doing it here. And tomorrow we're doing it here and then next week we're doing it there and our teachers are doing it there. Like, um, you know, when I think about the, you know, demands like Pierce, you talked about like, I mean, you all as educators in the classroom are being asked to do a lot of things, right? Implement new practices, to try new things, to assess, you know, to assess students and evaluate that data and make changes and identify vocal students, like all these things that are what is best for the kids in our school, but is also a lot to ask, right? Um, and so just like a lot of appreciation for everyone across the system doing this. I'm like, well, of course we can be like, we can, we can push on ways that this can be better. It can always be better. And I think one thing that you have done and everyone has done is said like, yeah, this is, this is the conversation we're having tonight, but there's a thousand more ways we could slice this data. There's a thousand other conversations we could have, like, we are going deeper, we can go deeper, we should be doing, you know, we're going to continue to iterate and evaluate and make adjustments. Um, and we should be like pushing on that in ways that are respectful and productive. Um, and I think, you know, respecting the, uh, respecting the people that are engaging in this work to bring these presentations, to make adjustments in their classroom, to, um, to have, you know, these difficult conversations and to question and evaluate just the way you may or may not be best supporting. Like these are all hard conversations to have and hard adjustments to make. And, um, you know, just, just to piggyback on kind of what Allison shared, like to be disrespectful in public comment just isn't, isn't something I feel comfortable just like not addressing. Um, given how hard everyone is working to have a conversation at a board level that very, very, very few districts and boards are having. Um, so I think we can continue to push and continue to ask questions. I am not a stranger to doing that. Um, and you know, I think you all have done that tonight. And I agree with some of the, you know, some of the comments around tracking students in cohorts and how do we, you know, how do we continue to just deepen these conversations, have more of these conversations? Um, and I agree, uh, Allison, I think I was, one of the questions I wrote down or, or things I'd be interested in talking about more is just similar to the book not conversation, like digging into a few more of those, which I'm sure that you are, are already doing. Um, but like really picking those apart. And then as we talk about like budget and those sorts of things, like what are the things that we're changing? What are the things that we're like, you know what? This just didn't work at all. We don't think that there's, so we're discarding. What are the? Um, and not that we should be like pivoting every other second, right? That's hard. Um, and, and impacts obviously like our educators and our kids in our system, but, um, are there those tweaks that we're already making? And how are we having those conversations kind of again at every layer of the system? Um, what do we think has been the most impactful? And like, how are we leaning into that? What are we getting an inclination that just isn't working in the way that we want? And how do we know then? What does that mean we're doing? So I'd be interested to, um, continue having those conversations as you all dig deeper into that.
Yeah, some comments. We work in a profession where everything is public. All of our meetings are public, all of our data is public, all of our, you know, strategies are public. And so the cool thing about that is you can actually just go online and type in the name of any school district and find out all this same information. And I actually think our community should do that. This board, and actually I should point out there are others who were on this board at the time, who are no longer on the board, but the board trustees. Uh, you've all went through an incredible process three years ago to make a shift to your math pathways. There were meetings that went on until two, three in the morning. I stood in my kitchen in Hollister at two thirty in the morning seeing that my wife said, what? What I'm, you want to work there? And I said, I did, this is an anomaly. I looked at the other meetings and they don't all go until three in the morning. It was three in the morning. Okay. So, and I'm saying that not to sort of, you know, take us back in time, but to talk about what, what governance work took place to get to that point. Okay. The decision was made. It was put forward. I joined the district, uh, like a month and a half later. We didn't have a pathway at that point. We had a decision. Remember we adopted the pathway six months later. We sat back there and went to war with each other for months, people in this room. And then arrived at where we're at. There are multiple super high-profile districts that are in court right now have lost litigation based on how they implemented their changes. Their scores are showing the reverse. This is all public. Don't take my word for it. Go and do the research yourself. And the turmoil continues. Look at what, look at your data. Look at the system of governance and leadership and excellence in the classroom that has come from this change. It wasn't just the stroke of a pen to change a policy. It was the foresight to take on a controversial topic. And then the finesse and the experience to lead the governance work towards let's hire a coordinator for that. Let's hire TOSSAs for that. Let's get top quality instructional supports in place. Let's bring on board, uh, uh, our curriculum. And let's create a system to collect data so we can analyze it and just keep this. So even today, there were teachers talking to one another and there are principals visiting classrooms. All a part of a bigger decision that was made in this room three years ago. That's, you know, to me, that's, that's why we're here. The reason this was agendaized as this topic for this amount of time for this group to discuss is because this board has said, this is important and we will do this. Um, so then it's just on us, our staff to put it all together. And, um, I, I'm really curious. Yeah, Super East, I'm curious to do some of the, the cohorted work and, and we can bring that back to an upcoming meeting. And I think, you know, there were some comments that were, that were made in public comment tonight, that I think if they were directed at my colleagues, I think they're just unfair and not accurate. Um, because, you know, there, these folks can slice it up anyway. There's, you know, there's sort of a logic behind like, how much data can you show? Like, well, at one point it's seventy-four pages of data just become, you can't have a conversation about it, but there's no content behind it. And, and at the same time, I think, um, you know, I just think the people that work for us are incredible people. Our teachers and our principals are amazing. And, um, that's the spirit I try to come into this work with. And then with, with the work that we do at the governance level, we're way up there when it comes to the, um, driven, hard conversation. We have hard conversations in this room. And tonight's a perfect example of another one. Um, but it's not the only one. We have others coming down the pike. So be, so stay tuned and we hope, I, I hope to continue to see, um, the work move forward.
Just in case it, it gets lost in the shuffle, but I, I, I do want to celebrate the gains that we've made. I think we've made incredible progress, especially, you know, I just, um, just from a personal experience, seeing, you know, having a, a first grader who went through the path programming kindergarten and just seeing like the incredible progress, um, that a lot of the kids have made, not just, not just the actual learning, um, not like the, not just the learning that we can measure, but even just seeing like the way that they approach language and the way that, um, like the excitement and creativity that I think that, that the kids feel more comfortable, like being brave and, and trying new things. I think that that element is, it doesn't show up in the numbers, but it's incredibly valuable. And it's, I, you know, I really value that part of the program. So, um, I just want to say great job.
Thank you for the presentation. If I said anything, I would be repeating what all my little trustees have said. You've covered the full gamut of everything that I would just want to echo. And, uh, thank you. Thank you for your team, all the work that you're doing.
Right. It's like I'm ready for me to start. Just kidding. Okay. I do need a motion to during this meeting. Motion to adjourn. Now, second, thank you, trustee Tran for the motion. Trustee for the second, all those in favor. Hi. Have a nice night, everybody.
All right, folks. Thank you.